Welcome, everyone, to the March 13 City Council Work Session. If you are in the room or watching this from afar, you might say to yourself, "Where are all those councilors?" And we have two out of town. We have one who's making an emergency vet run with his doggy. And we have one we expect on the phone and one we expect coming. So that's where we are right now. But it is time to begin. And so our issue today is a very important one in our city and one that Councilor Brown has brought forward to us. That must be Councilor Clark?
Yes, I am here.
Good. We're just getting ready to get going. So we're talking about the use of pesticides in city parks and buildings. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. And I'll turn it over to Kevin Finney from our Parks and Open Space program.
Welcome.
Yep, thanks. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to talk with you today. My name's Kevin Finney. I'm the Park Operations Manager in Parks and Open Space. I've developed this presentation in collaboration with some colleagues from facilities. We have some facility management folks in the audience. We have questions for them later. But before I get started, I'd like to point out that the AIS in your packet and the memo to council, which was Attachment A to the AIS, provide answers to some of the specific questions which were presented in the work session request.
Mm-hmm. Devin, will you talk right into the mic? I have no idea how people at home are hearing it, but it doesn't sound very loud here.
I can hear clearly on the phone.
Okay, that's good.
I'm gonna do it this way. So there's some information in your packet. The memo attached to the AIS provides some of the technical responses to some of the technical questions. So what I'd like to do today is go through a presentation that kind of explains what integrated pest management is, how the city uses integrated pest management. And then we can come back with probably at least a half an hour of time to talk, answer questions or for discussion. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So we'll start out today defining some terms related to pesticides and pests. Then we'll cover -- let me do this. All right? There we go.
Sorry.
I'm Kevin Finney.
Thanks, thank you.
So we'll start out talking about what pests are and then what we manage in the city, which pests we're controlling. We'll talk about integrated pest management, how the city uses it, and we'll talk a little bit about partnering to reduce the use of pesticides, and then we'll have time for questions as we mentioned. So what's a pest? In this context, a pest is an organism that's seen as injurious or unwanted. It's something that's really in the wrong place from a human perspective. They're typically injurious, but they're often tolerable or even desirable in other settings. You know, in explaining this, I often use the example of the blackberry vine that grows in my neighbor's backyard. It consumes his backyard, but it grows over the fence and provides me with a few blackberries. So it works great for me, but it's a pest for him. So it's all about context, I think. So what's a pesticide? These are the chemicals that kill the pests. There are hundreds and hundreds, thousands of them and probably scores of kinds. Herbicides are what we'll be talking about today. These are the chemicals that kill weeds. Insecticides kill insects. Fungicides kill fungi. And of course, antimicrobials kill viruses and bacteria. And this includes bleach and hand cleansers and things like that even. Some pesticides are derived from plants or animals, and many others are synthesized in a laboratory. Some are very toxic to non-target organisms and others are not. So it's hard to generalize about them as regards those properties. What pests do we control? Most frequently for us in Parks and Open Space, this is about English ivy, blackberry, Scots broom, invasive grasses and herbs in natural areas. We see these pests in parks and natural areas, and they present particular challenges for us with habitat restoration work. Other city staff who manage landscapes, including my colleagues from facility management, they also see the usual garden weeds that we see that can explode in a shrub bed or lawn if they're not managed carefully. So that's also a part of our pesticide use program. In POS, we encounter more than our share of yellow jackets during the season and hornets. So each summer, we do a certain amount -- we do an amount of nest bombing, especially or principally where the nests are near high-traffic areas, playgrounds and so forth. We don't hit every yellow jacket. In fact, this is another one of those issues where it's a context issue. In the south hills along a trail where the yellow jacket nest is well away from the trail, we wouldn't bother them a bit. They do have a kind of a role in the natural system. But if a yellow jacket nest gets built in a play area, we would tend to go after that. And these are the only places that Parks and Open Space uses insecticides currently that our staff are applying insecticides. Facilities is also managing mice, ants, fleas, and even squirrels in some community centers and other buildings. So I'll give you a sense of what we're working against. So what's IPM? Integrated Pest Management. For the past 30 years, Parks and Open Space staff have been leaders in the development of IPM strategies for managing our pests. For those of you who remember Tim Ray, he was a big advocate early on, starting around 1980. He was my predecessor's predecessor. And other land -- so Parks and Open Space has been at this for a long time. Other land and facility managers, including wastewater and facility management, are also using this rational framework for making pest control decisions today. So what is IPM? It starts with an establishment of thresholds, and this piece involves considering what's the level of a pest that's not tolerable for whatever reason. It might be a threat to property or human health, for example. And again, the thresholds vary from one context to another. As I mentioned, around yellow jackets, we would treat them differently in different situations. We might also leave weeds in a rough mow area, in a natural area, whereas we would try to attack them and move them out in a sports field where they could cause an injury if somebody -- you know, the surface gets uneven and somebody falls. So we would attack them a little bit differently. So the point there is about we establish a threshold, which may be different in different contexts. The next piece, of course, is to identify the pests. For us, we want to make sure we know what we're dealing with. It's a weed in a lawn. Which weed is it? Where is it vulnerable? What's its life cycle? So we study the life cycle, the biology of the pest. And then we work on prevention. So what are the things, based on what we've learned about this pest? What are the ways it's vulnerable? Can we smother it? Can we dry it out? Can we change the pH of the soil to make it less viable for that particular pest if we're talking about weeds? One of the most common prevention methods we use in parks is heavy mulching. So we keep down weeds by covering the ground with wood chips or other kind of mulch materials. We also use timed mowing. So we mow blackberry in particular a couple times a year to just keep it from growing too much, going to seed and flower. So when the pest monitoring that we're doing, we're keeping an eye on the pests, we understand the biology.
Do you want to shift your slide?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Two things at once. There we go. Thanks, John. So control actions. This is what happens if our monitoring reveals to us that the pest is kind of growing past the threshold. We're getting -- the population is getting a little bit out of control. This is a little dark, but what this person is doing here is flame weeding. So this is one of the control methods that we might start with, for example, in a bed that's -- and this is at Hendrix Park, where weeds are starting to come into the bed. Before we would spray, we might be managing it while this -- before the weeds come to seed, we'd be managing by burning them out. So we'd start with the low toxicity effective approach and test that. This is kind of part of the IPM strategy. Start with the least toxic, most effective method you have, kind of work up. So if the low-risk methods don't bring the pest population down under the threshold, then we might go to alternative methods. And that might include going to some sort of biological control, Cinnabar moth or something like that, Frotanzi, for example. Or it could include going to spot spraying of pesticide. So if we can't control the pest, eventually the IPM process sort of step up in sort of the effectiveness and to some extent, the toxicity of what you're using. But then, of course, then we would also balance that. At some point, we'd say it's not worth it. So we can talk about the specific chemicals we use later. But I want to make a couple of other points here. Yeah, as I said, if the IPM strategy leads to application of pesticides, it always starts with the least toxic pesticide available that's effective for that application. Any POS staff who make applications are state licensed, and we report all of our applications to the Oregon Department of Agriculture. So I provided you in the memo a copy of our report from 2011, which went to ODA and shows everything that was applied by POS staff in 2011. So the final step in the IPM strategy then is the evaluation phase. And this is where we look at what we -- consider what we did and what we got from it. Was this an effective method of control? Is it something that we can modify slightly? For example, if we had done flame weeding in Schober Park, which is a pesticide-free park, it could be -- in fact, what we found was it was very effective for reducing weed populations, but it also blasted a lot of the shrubs and other kind of vegetation. So it wasn't a good fit for Schober Park when it had the old kind of tight shrub plantings that it had. But it's still a good tool for our toolbox. But during the evaluation phase of this, in the integrated pest management strategy, we sort of rethink the question whether this is a strategy we would use again in a similar situation. And if it did work, we document that as best management practice, and it goes into our So where the city currently uses IPM? All city parks and natural areas, community centers and pools, wastewater treatment plant, street medians and other right-of-way plantings, at the atrium, the Holt Center, and the Train Depot, at the fire station, 911 Center, and other city facilities. Little bit about how we do it. Parks and Open Space IPM policy and manual describes prevention and control methods for pests in shrub beds, turf, playgrounds, forests, waterways, and 19 other landscape and habitat types. Manual is updated periodically as new information and techniques become available and as we -- this sort of process is informed by our own use and development of best management practices. The current manual contains 96 pages. It's a hefty document. And our manual's been adopted for the IPM programs in facility management and wastewater divisions. Although I should say, they've adapted that, our policy. So another piece of our IPM strategy in Parks and Open Space is we've designated no-spray zones in developed parks. So they establish setbacks typically 25 feet from these kinds of places. Playgrounds and play equipment, picnic tables in the areas around them, dog parks, every place in a dog park and within 25 feet of a dog park. For catch basin and curb inlets, where we want to make sure that anything we're applying is not getting directly into the stormwater. Swimming pools, wading pools, spray play features, and community gardens all have no-spray zones overlaying them. So the map that you can -- the aerial photo here shows Washington Park before it was entered the pesticide-free park program. And the colored areas designate the pesticide-free zone. So around the play area, the community center, the spray play feature, and the picnic areas. And here, I'd like to give a shout out to Lisa Arkin and Beyond Toxics and the team at NCAP who partnered with us, who kind of got Washington Park into the pesticide-free park program. I'll talk a little bit about that more in a minute. Other ways that the city is using IPM now. Facility management staff are managing turf and landscapes at several facilities without the use of pesticides at all. So this is a set of decisions that was made through the application of the IPM strategy. Sites include Police Services Headquarters Building, Train Depot, community centers at the River House and up at Washington Park, the Kaufman House, and the Facility Management Campus, and the Lincoln Yards. So those areas are being managed without pesticides. In Parks and Open Space, since about 2006, I think we started our -- opened our first pesticide-free park program, launched it at Schober Park, and since then, we've added a couple more parks. So we now have eight pesticide-free parks in the system. They're all managed without the use of pesticides at several of the sites, including Aubrey, Rosetta Park, and Washington Park. Neighbors support the effort by assisting with weeding and other vegetation management. Moving on, the city's pesticide-free parks program was intended to provide a pesticide-free recreational environment for park users for whom that was important. But another major goal of this program is to showcase alternative methods of landscape management, encourage our community to use less of these chemicals in our residential neighborhoods and commercial areas. Another way of how we're using -- other example of how the city's using IPM. Facilities management teams also reported some recent success with no pesticide approach to pest management at Peterson Barn Fire Station and the Animal Shelter. In these sites, fleas, crane flies, and mice were controlled through diligent applications of the IPM methodology. So partnering. Parks and Open Space staff are active partners in the development of a series of manuals published by NCAP, the Northwest Center for Alternatives to Pesticides. And these manuals present non-chemical strategies for managing weeds in public landscapes. The publications are available on NCAP's website. In addition, POS staff are frequently called upon to provide information about our alternative pest control methods, our IPM program, and our pesticide-free parks program. As regards promoting the IPM approach, the Parks and Open Space Division promotes IPM through our website, where we provide access to the POS IPM manual. You can get it just by Googling Eugene Parks IPM, or Eugene IPM, it even comes up. Our website also provides information on the pesticide-free park program, including locations of all the pesticide-free parks for people who want to seek them out and go to them. And we provide a link to NCAP's site, where you can access their extensive library of information about alternative pest control methods. So that's an overview of what IPM is, how we're using it, how it's been implemented at the city. Be happy to answer questions on any of this, other information.
Thank you. How often do you update the IPM manual?
You know, when the manual is adopted, we said we'd do that periodically. And it's been three times in, let's say, four times in six years.
Mm-hmm.
And we actually, it is a role that kind of we do an official updating of it, where we would publish it separately, ask for comments, but we actually will incorporate new methods and things as we develop them. So it's kind of a rolling document.
So the only other question I have, and then I've got Claire and George in the queue, is --
Can I get in your queue, Matt?
Is that I understand that you, from what you said there, you learn from your experience in using the products and make adjustments accordingly. But do you have a way of keeping up with the best practices? Because things change a lot over time. What was considered integrated pest management back when it started is a very different thing than it is today. So could you talk about that a bit?
Yeah. You know, I think that's a constant challenge, of course, to stay on top of what the latest developments are. One of the things that I think has helped us out the most was -- has been our kind of partnership and communicating with advocates. You know, folks like Lisa Arkin will let us know, kind of raise issues for us, also the folks at NCAP. So it's really through our partnerships and through our interfacing with other professionals in our field. We tend to -- you know, one of the things we've noticed is when we send our folks for pesticide recertification training, the -- I'm so happy to see this, the emphasis of the training, we used to call them the Monsanto workshops because they were basically this, you know, sort of sales pitches from the chemical companies. They're becoming more and more about integrated pest management and alternatives.
That's great.
So the field is changing. The advocates definitely are a big help.
Well, I do think that our community has been out in the front on this for a long time, and I think probably you would find around this table that we want to stay out in front as much as we can. Have a lot of concern about having the safest and yet usable public spaces. So appreciate the work that's been done and just want to be encouraging you all to keep staying on the front edge of what's happening and force to make adjustments as needed. Claire, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. That was great. And I really appreciate the thoughtful, rigorous work that you guys are doing in terms of the integrated pest management and your partnership with the advocacy organizations to really incorporate best practices. So that's fantastic. I just had some questions. In the public comment we heard the other night, there was a mention of, well, concern around the particular classification of the neonicotinoids. I'll pretend I said that right. And also a concern around harm to bees. And we just passed our urban farming ordinance to encourage more beekeeping. And also someone mentioned use around salmon restoration. So a couple of questions there. One around, are we using that classification of pesticides that was mentioned as a concern? And do we have any influence over what other agencies are doing on their properties that might be within the city limits, such as O.BLM or Georgia Pacific along the railroads? I don't know if you could speak to that?
Yes, I can. I put on your table in front of you today, had available the report from Laurelwood Golf Course, which wasn't available in time. And when I -- to get in the packet, when I reviewed that, I see that there is a neonicotinoid insecticide being used at Laurelwood Golf Course. That's of some concern. Our contract with Laurelwood requires that they ask us for -- let us know that they want to make an application. So we'll have an opportunity to talk with them about that. Either applying it to turf, which is probably better than putting it on flowering plants, but I think it's still of some concern. So I think we'll follow up with that. There also have been some applications of neonicotinoids made in the downtown flower pots and baskets. So talked with my colleagues in facilities management about that and kind of agreed we need to put our heads together. Kind of this is one of the wonderful things about IPM is, you know, we'll rethink some things, look at some alternatives, and based on new information, we'll make a new decision. So I don't see anything there that's insurmountable for us. I think the concern, from my perspective, is valid. So that's my concern. Our ability to impact other agencies, I think one of the best things we can do is continue to demonstrate alternatives. And that's one of the places we've been leaders, I think, is that we've had resources, particularly in capital projects, to test different ways of doing things. We had a major set of EPA-funded plots out in West Eugene where we tested many -- several different ways of managing toward restoration to native habitat. And so we're still helping, you know, sort of supporting the development of alternatives. In that case, I think the alternative or the sort of favored approach did include the use of herbicides and suggested that some of the other alternatives that we were excited about, like solarizing, covering it with plastic and letting it heat up, affected biodiversity much more than the application of herbicides did. It kind of cooked out all the fungi, so the soil wasn't working properly. So it's very complicated, but we continue to partner with other agencies and try to be on the forefront. Recently, with our partners in NCAP, talked about getting more people into the pesticide-free parks so that we can use those as teaching opportunities. So I think that's where we can be effective, I mean, at the staff level. I think you have all kinds of opportunity at the policy level.
Great. I'm glad you mentioned the flower pots, because I noticed they were on the list here, and it seems like for aphid control, there must be more natural ways to get at that than using a pesticide. And can you speak to what is -- how this is being handled at the airport? I didn't see that in the presentation anywhere.
The airport is currently not using an IPM approach to management of the airport, but they are in the -- very near in the pipeline, in early stages of discussing how that can happen. So we'll be working with them to help them.
I mean, that's a huge plot of land out there that we should be incorporating into this system. I think that's important. It's adjacent to wetlands and other sensitive areas. And then the other question I had was just about dealing with blackberries. I noticed in the write-up, you know, we'll mow them down, and if they're still coming up, we might apply an herbicide to them. What about just pulling them out of the ground physically?
You know, I have some personal experience with that on a large scale. We tried, we actually got some grant money that we could use to try that approach at Delta Ponds in one of the early phases of that restoration project. We cut and then grubbed the crowns, and the crowns of some of those blackberry were -- I've never seen anything. I was surprised. We piled up the crowns and left them separated from the ground on tarp so that they would just decompose. It was extremely expensive, and it wasn't effective enough that granting agencies would support that again. So right now, for example, if we go to OWEB, the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board for a grant related to some sort of habitat improvement project, they want to know that we're doing mowing and spraying. That's considered the best management practice.
Well, I'm glad you at least tried.
We keep trying.
And then my last question is about the pesticide-free parks. I'm just wondering, does it really require a volunteer corps to make that happen for a neighborhood park? Is that a pretty key ingredient to that aspect?
You know, we started the program out with the lowest, sort of the low-threshold parks, the ones that we thought we could manage without it having an impact on our own resources. You know, this one would be doable, that one would be doable. It's sort of a way to get the concept out there. And then some more complicated and more demanding parks came forward. It is a significantly -- we need to make a, you know, you don't need to go one way. Provide more resources to keep the same level of service or the same level of sort of aesthetics or agree that you'll let that change. So I think that's kind of what we're watching the community to help us establish that, what works for them, because it is their system. So I thought the pesticide-free parks program might run a little faster than it has, but it's really kind of up against that volunteer issue right now, so.
Right. Thank you very much.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you very much, Kevin, for the reply to all the questions and the presentation. I just want to point out that I left everybody a copy of Richmond, California's -- it's an ordinance. And as far as I know, we do not have an ordinance on IPM. Is that correct? We don't have an ordinance?
To my knowledge, we do not.
No, I didn't think so.
We have department policy.
Yeah. And I printed out the policy in operating manual. It's about 100 pages, and I have not read through it. I want to apologize to everyone. First of all, I've been ill, very ill, for the last 10 days or so. And so I was not able to give today's work session my normal degree of attention. And so, however, I do have some questions.
Feel good.
I see that there's what, eight parks are pesticide-free? Okay. Can people say, go to the city's website? Let's just say, honey, let's take the kids to a park today, but let's -- we don't want them to be exposed to any pesticides. If they can look on the website and see which parks those are. I think you've spoken to this a little bit already, but why aren't all of -- I think our goal, obviously, would be to have all the parks pesticide-free. We seem to be moving in that direction. It's a lack of resources to both in volunteers, to not making that happen. So if we maybe went to the neighborhoods and said, "I'm thinking more of West Eugene", and said, "Hey, guys, we want to make this park pesticide-free, but we need you parents to help us come out and attack the problem." And got more actively engaged with the community to make that happen, would that be a possibility?
I would, absolutely.
Do you do that now? Do you go around the neighborhood meetings and say?
Have done. It's been --
Uh-huh. Been there, done that.
Probably a year and a half or two, maybe even three by now, years since we've kind of pushed the program out. Feeling like, you know, we were trying to make it available to folks and not advocating for it as much as letting the community decide. So if people wanted to make that, kind of move in that direction, and they want to bring resources or kind of have some ideas. You know, the other issue, just, you know, is we, if folks want to help us set their expectations for a particular park around, you know, the aesthetic piece, that's also part of that conversation. Because I think when we went to, when I went to River Road Neighborhood Association and talked with them about Aubrey Park, there was some, you know, question about, well, what's it going to look like? Well, it might look a little different. It might be a little rough. But you know what? I haven't, and now it's been, what, six years? I haven't gotten a I haven't gotten a single complaint about the appearance of a pesticide-free park. So, where we thought that might be a concern hasn't been. At the same time, the ground swell hasn't happened.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think that just people's aesthetic has changed through time, too. It's like, well, no, it doesn't have to be perfectly manicured in every detail, it doesn't have to look like the PGA Tour Golf Course in Phoenix, you know? It's okay to have some rough edges here and there. But at least we know that our children and our pets won't be exposed to any poisonous chemicals, so I think that's a good development. You know, I was looking over the list of what we're currently using, and thank you again for that list, and I just, I don't see any material for the parks, for the non- IPM parks. Is that contracted out to? We don't have all the contractors' materials yet either. Is some of that contracted out?
We have, everything that POS app applies, it was in the report, in the memo. We have contractors make applications at Laurelwood, so we've got that recently.
That came today, yes, thank you.
And we have the chemical names, but not amounts at this point for the Rose Garden.
Okay.
We have a contractor there, and kind of what happens is, depending on how they're doing their record-keeping, they may or may not be able to tease apart what they did all year long and provide that for us. So, they're still working on that.
I'd like another round, Mayor. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate very much the fine report and the innovative practices. I heard you mention during the course of your presentation several of the types of animals that are considered by the city to be pests. As word five is just chock-full, we're fortunate, we're chock-full of rivers and ponds up here. And one of the pests that a good number of my constituents suffer from, I didn't hear you mention, yes, Mayor, nutria. That's right. And I'm wondering if you can tell me a couple of things. One, does the city consider nutria to be pests? If not, why not? And if they do, can you talk about procedures to eradicate them from city facilities?
That's, yeah, as big as the universe and everything else. I think, from the, I can speak from parks and open space perspective, nutria are definitely a problem for us. You know, they push out native animals, and they-
Forgive me, do we consider them pests officially?
I don't think the city has an official pest list, and I would say, you know, the way we tend to look at that, Counselor, is, you know, it's the animal in the wrong place. From my perspective, the nutria in Lane County is in the wrong place, but I, we don't have an official policy around that. You know, the only place that we manage it in parks and open space, we manage that animal in some instances where it has an impact on restoration projects, and then we tend to overplant, for example, or in some cases, we might fence areas to keep the nutria out until, you know, until plants have a chance to get established, and then at that point, we're hoping the predators keep the nutria down. So, we do not have an eradication program. We've certainly looked at that in the past. I think that the easy, cost-effective answer isn't there. We could press down on the population inside the city limits really hard, and as soon as we let up, they would flood in from everywhere else. So, it really is a regional problem.
Uh-huh. But we do have a policy for eradication of other animals that are pests, like mice, as you mentioned. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't, again, I don't think that there is a policy that would say that mice, for example, that mice would be eradicated whenever we see them. Mice in the wrong place would be considered a pest, and then we would implement an IPM approach to managing that pest.
Okay, thank you.
So, just, and then I'm going to call on George, but just to kind of use what you were talking about before, we would find, for example, mice in many places where we would just say, that's where mice live, and that's, and we wouldn't be doing anything about it. We just sort of consider that part of the world of animal and wildlife. It's only when they get into places that do damage, or compete for space with other things that you want to be there, that they become an issue. So, that's true of almost everything, including us, but anyways, yeah.
Forgive me, is that the policy position?
I was just, it was a comment on my part, Counselor Clark. I don't, I just, I don't, I think what they're saying is, there is not a policy position.
Okay. Thank you.
And the only other thing I wanted to say before going back to, going over here to George, is we do have our Park Stewards Program, which is an encouragement to get communities to adopt parks, and certainly this could be something that they could pursue in that realm, right?
Absolutely. And it's special, and the Park Stewards Program is doing, through, they have about 4,300 volunteers, did, I think, 11,000 hours of work last year, almost 400 different events. And they do, they do do some vegetation management work that helps with the minimalization of pesticide application, so, but it's a huge amount of work.
Rich?
First of all, thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. Very informative, and, you know, it's impressive to see that the City of Eugene's been on top of this, or at least trying to get on top of this since the '80s, and, you know, being that it's fairly new to the system, it's a good, it's good to see that you're constantly evaluating the practices that are put in place so that you can make the appropriate changes. It's good to see that you're getting involved with not only advocacy groups, but, you know, neighborhood groups in parks, people interested in parks, so we don't have to legislate it with an ordinance. I think it's a good policy that the city is following, and I think it's doing a wonderful job. And again, I'm impressed with the fact that you're willing to at least review what we're doing, and even, you know, narrowing it down to specific sites where you've done an application. You go back and then you re-study everything to see what worked, what didn't work, and let's try to change it this way. I think it's a great approach, and I'm really impressed. You know, it's come a long way since the days where you come out with the old pepper fogger and spray the DDT out, and then walk off and leave it for two weeks, you know? Obviously, it's a changing field, and I'm glad that the City of Eugene is being used, basically, as an example by other communities, obviously, because we're being called upon, the city's being called upon to give presentations over and over and over again. So, you know, we are, I think we are doing the right thing, we are headed in the right way, and I am very encouraged by the work that's being done. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'd like to go back to, I think, my last question, when I'm looking at the pesticides that we're using now, and I, I'll go back to my same point. I don't see any listings for the non-pesticide-free parks.
A separate, by park?
Well, no, just by general. I mean, see, like, it'll say, you know, downtown flower pots, atrium, police headquarters. I see nothing for parks, and yet, since only some of the-
The front page lists the parks and open space applications?
Okay, so, I see.
And that's all of them aggregated?
Thanks. Well, there, see, I told you, I wasn't all, I'll hear it again.
It's a lot of information.
So, this is what's being used on the non-pesticide?
Free parks, exactly, right. And we can map that, if, just bragging a little bit, we can map that and show you what was done, you know, geographically. We track all of that, so what was made, application was made where.
Okay. Well, like, one of my next, my next question is, I think one thing we all want to stay away from is anything that's carcinogenic, mutagenic, hormone disruptor, and now I would add neonicotinoid. Are any of these pesticides, any of those, are some of them neonicotinoids?
The only neonicotinoids that I found on our list were the applications made on the downtown flower pots and at Laurelwood.
I see.
And as to the, you know, the questions of toxicity and carcinogenicity are, they're sort of spectral question, right? Is it, has it been demonstrated to cause cancer in mice, for example? And actually, I can't, I can't answer that. I can certainly, we could look into it, but I'm, my guess is that there's a spectrum, again, you know, that some of the chemicals that we're using, we've evolved to the ones that have the least bad rap in a lot of, you know, that's really what we're trying to do. We're throwing out the stuff that kind of comes up as clearly most harmful, but I, you know, we'd have to go back and look at each chemical.
Okay. Well, I think that that might be a good thing to do. You know, we have our toxic right-to-know law, and it's part of the city charter, and I think people, I think it's important for people to be able to go to the city's website, go to Parks and Open Space, and look at this information that you've provided us. And, you know, I'm, I am not a scientist. I loved chemistry, but I didn't do very well at it really, as far as grades go. So, you know, there's brand names, and then there's chemical names, and then there's categories, like, ooh, does this contain a carcinogen? Does this contain? I think it would be really, I think it's essential, actually, to have that be able to be looked up by the public, to see that. And of course, anything that is in those categories, we should immediately work towards stopping, you know, stopping the use. Is there currently a site where people can go and see this information that you provided us today?
The, it's not available on our website at this point. So, I, and I'm not, I'm not sure if you can get that back from Oregon Department of Agriculture by searching their website. I've never done that. It's possible, but there's no reason we can't make that available. Thoughts?
Yeah, I think it would be really important to do that. I think, I know the public would really appreciate that. I can't think of anyone who would object to it. Well, I think that's it for now. Oh, I have, sorry, I thought of one more thing. I'm looking at the sheet for Laurelwood Golf Course, and I see under the column amounts used, legend, 144 ounces. Is that, is that fluid or alcool de pois?
You know, that information's not here, so it could have been put on as a flowable powder, it could have been applied as, you know, in a granular form.
Yeah. I was just curious, but it's not, with mostly everything else, it's pretty clear.
Yes.
It's a fluid, or it was a dry, or-
I think, it looks to me like they pulled this from their records, not from their ODA report. So, we can certainly ask them for that.
And this is why, you know, I think, I bet, I will bet, it's not just me, I think everyone at this table, you look at this list, and you go to the left, and you go, huh, triaton flow? That sounds pretty cool. I have no idea what it is, or, you know? So, that's why I think that, you know, the brand name, the scientific name, and then just plain old English name, and then, you know, this, what's it supposed to do, and what are we using? I think it would really be invaluable for the public to have, be able to access this stuff. So, I think that's it for my questions, but I would like to make some comments before we close.
We're about ready to wind up this. The only other thing that I would say is, I don't know how much of the IPM program is sort of written into, in an aspirational way for our city, because while, for example, I think that we, aspirationally, if we chose to, we could say it's our goal as a city to do what you just said, which is to use the least toxic solution, and it's our goal, if the council or the, decided they want to do that, that we would move in the direction of having more and more pesticide-free parks, and just sort of aspirationally, where we're aiming, and because we're trying to be a, in a way, we're trying to be a model for the rest of the community, and so, for us to say what we think is best, and how we're going to try to apply it, and to invite the, sorry, the rest of the community to join us in this effort, I don't know how we would do that, but that would make sense to me, because that's how you kind of use this, our own stewardship of city property, and try to use that as a way to have a conversation with the broader community, and a, sort of invite you to understand and improve this with, for all of us, because I think, as Counselor Brown's talked about, yes, we can, we can fix our parks, but they are only one space in isolation in the broader, broader community, so there probably is a role for us to be aspirational about what we would, as a community, like to move toward, and we can be part of making those kinds of comments, and why we're doing what we're doing. And as George here said, we're proud of what we've been doing, and been doing it for a long time, and inviting the rest of the community to more fully participate in that with us seems to me to be something that we, as a governing body, could do. Anybody else have, we're going to wrap this one up. Go ahead, George.
Yes, Mayor, thanks. I, yeah, I'm not proposing that we vote on anything today, but I, I'm not exactly sure how I move forward with this. In your correct, Mayor, we've, we've come an incredibly long way the last 25 years, and it's phenomenal, and I thank you, and everybody that's been working on this, and but we're not, we're not there yet. We're just not there yet, and I think we all recognize that. There's no finger pointing, or, you know, getting angry, or anything, doesn't have anything to do with that. We're, we still have a ways to go, so what I can have in mind is, I think that we should create, and I'm willing to take the lead on this, I think we should create an IPM ordinance similar to, I left everybody, Richmond's, California, and Newport, Oregon, and Waltsport, Oregon, and San Francisco, and Boulder, and it would be, it would be in alignment, say, with the state IPM policy for schools, which is a really good one, and it would, of course, incorporate what we've already done. It may involve a few changes to those. I'm not proposing anything radical, not proposing anything we can't live without, but it would be an aspirational statement, like the other cities have made, and then maybe a few things would be proposed that we would try to implement immediately. That's what I'm proposing to work on, going in the future, and come up with something, and then come back to council later, and of course, give counselors plenty of time to look it over before we talk about it. I think that there should be a posting on the public website of what we're currently using, very, I mean, it's basically exactly what you just, you know, with the information that we got, and sharing that information with the public will be much appreciated. I think, you know, some kind of a statement, maybe it would be in the ordinance, definitely no carcinogens, hormone disruptors, mutagens, neonicotinoids, something like that. So, that's what I want to work on, and that's the way I see to move this forward, and then thank you. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not criticizing in any way. I'm applauding the work that everyone's done these last couple of decades, but, like I say, I think we all realize we're just not there yet, so I'd like to see us move it on. Thank you.
George?
Well, I agree with Counselor Brown. I don't think we're there yet, but I don't think we'll ever be there, because there keeps moving. And, you know, I think by proposing an ordinance, I think we're going to actually handcuff what we can do to adapt to the ever-changing process of how to, how to actually control the invasive species and everything else. You know, this, I'm sure right now is probably more time-consuming to do the IPM than the old-fashioned way, but the old-fashioned way is not the way to do it anymore. Back in the old-fashioned days, it was probably state-of-the-art, but because things constantly- things constantly change, and, you know, somebody, somewhere in the city in the 1980s had the foresight to realize this, we've been able to change and adapt. If we codify this, even if it's an aspirational codification, we're going to handcuff ourselves, and every time we want to make a change to this for a positive, we're going to have to come back and readdress this at the council, to the council level. I think we're getting too involved, as a council, in the minutia of, of how we're going to, you know, take care of pests, and whatever else is out there. So, I'm not really, in, you know, not really buying the idea that we need to make this an ordinance. I think we have done a good job for 30 years, we're continuing to do that good job, we're obviously willing to make the changes necessary when, you know, the information comes, comes to the, the staff folks. I mean, just like today, you know, you're already looking at, well, let's go take a second look at the downtown city parks. I mean, we're spending, what, almost $10,000 on maintaining those pots every year? Yeah, we need to take a look on how we do it, maybe there is a less, a less expensive way without using all these chemicals. So, I, I think, I think, I think we have it, we're there as, as close as we're ever going to be to there, but again, because of ever-changing market, or not market, but the ever-changing way that things are occurring, that we'll never actually get there, because we're always going to have to be chasing that goalpost.
George Brown, and then Chris.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry you have that opinion of what I, of what I'm proposing. I think you're seeing a boogeyman who none exists. Gee, all I can say is that Richmond City Council, it was unanimous, Newport was unanimous, Walport was unanimous, everyone agreed to, to do these things, and it wasn't, it wasn't not even regarded as remotely controversial. So, I, I guess I'm a little puzzled. I wasn't proposing that even the council be involved unless they want to be, and anyone that wants to help me do this can, let's, I'd be thrilled for the help, but that's all I was proposing. It's not a, it's not a, like, I'm not proposing handcuffs and straitjackets. An ordinance can certainly, if, if you read the other ones, they're, they're aspirational, and yet, they're really firm about where they want to go, and I, I don't see any problem doing that. Thanks.
Chris?
This is interesting, that we, you know, nobody is questioning the, the effort that you're making, and the years of effort you've put into it, and I think everybody here has been thankful and congratulating you on the effort that you have put in. And it's interesting that, right now, what we're kind of talking about is, how can we ensure that that continues, that we, that we maintain that, that level of compliance? And when I think about an ordinance, you know, you create ordinances in order to ensure compliance, and so oftentimes, I'll approach an ordinance as a way to give it that extra emphasis to say, this is what you want to do. City councils have additional tools. One of them is the policy, and that's why the question was asked earlier, do we have an IPM policy? And we do have one, we don't have one? Okay, that's what I thought-
Only at the division level.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. So, I am in total agreement with, I think, what George is trying to say in terms of how important it is to us, that we reinforce the need to comply with IPM as something that we hold as a value. And to me, where, when I go to, when I go to a policy, a policy is an expression of the values of the council. And so, one of the things I might offer as an alternative to an ordinance, which I think we'd get to the same place, is, we create a very clear policy that this council has endorsed, that says, this is how we want IPM to go. It takes the burden off of you of having to try to guess what our intention is. An ordinance would do the same thing, but I think a policy is more within the structure that the city has. It would still accomplish, I think, everything that George is saying, but it would be more similar to other kinds of things we do with these same issues. So, I, I would encourage George to keep working on this, but maybe to approach it as a policy document that says, this is how the city of Eugene, at its policy level, at its leadership level, wants IPM to operate. I think it will send the signal that's every bit what George and I would also want to send, in terms of our desire to seek compliance, but it would do it in a way that would not be inconsistent with other kinds of policies that we have. I was surprised that we didn't have a more complete policy around IPM, and so, to me, that would be very much at the top of my list, is, let's get, let's get that in place, let's get a policy going. This has been a great presentation, I think we're already doing a lot of this stuff. What we want to do is, is, as George says, is codify it, get it set down so that everybody knows the council endorses it, supports it, and seeks compliance on it. Policies can then be revised and updated and altered on a much more frequent and consistent basis, which you might not be able to do with an ordinance. So, I might encourage you to, let's look at the policy as a, perhaps a way to get the same, the same goal.
Good idea, thanks.
Okay, we're going to, thank you, and we're going to move on, because we have next a progress report on our services supporting the homeless that we want to take a few moments on.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to give a brief update on our homelessness activities and our winter services that we provided on this past year. On February 12th, Council was emailed an update, which I'm working off of today, and you should have in front of you. We're currently updating this, and we expect the second version to be out in the next two weeks, I would assume. The due date for everyone to submit their materials is this Friday, so, after editing and turning it around, we should have that to you shortly. As far as our winter strategies go, we have contracted, and our agencies have begun drawing down funds for all the activities, with the exception of Eagan Warming Center, and I'll get to that in a moment. For our car camping program, we have been able to increase, we added about 10, or, we added 10 new people to the program, increased the number of sites by four. I think that the biggest piece of that, though, has been the inclusion of the Conestoga Huts, which are two of the additional sites, and that's serving six people, that's serving, yeah, six people, four individuals and one couple. St. Vincent de Paul has begun work, purchasing materials and design work for their storage units. They have two sites that are, that will serve as hosts for those units, they're just working out some design issues right now, and they're having their first run at it, and I know they're having some fun with it, but they've sent me some of the materials, some of the pictures, and it looks like they're starting to pull that together, and I can include that in the next report. Our security deposit rental assistance program, you'll see shortly, on April 22nd, the Housing Policy Board will be recommending an additional $100,000 in HUD home funding to help leverage the original $50,000 for that program. It's something that they feel, and our providers feel, we can turn that money around pretty quickly into that program, and having established that program already, it'll be easy to, to leverage what's already out there. And those are the main ones. St. Vincent de Paul did hire an outreach and referral coordinator almost immediately upon leaving the meeting. They said that the funds were granted, and they have been working just in referring, it's been out of the first-place family center, and they began work, like I said, almost immediately, and have been able to start using that. Likewise, Shelter Care's Emergency Housing Matching Grant for $25,000, they were able to match that program immediately, and that opened up two new units of emergency family housing in Eugene, which did not exist prior to the funding, and they are able to open those on the first of the year. And also, Station 7, Looking Glass's Station 7, has opened to two new units for expansion, and their goal was to serve people over the course of 100 days. That began above mid-January, so they're still working through that. If you remember, the Eagan Warming Center staff did not bring a proposal for Eagan, but Council asked us to go and work with Eagan. I have had conversations with some representatives of Eagan, and we've been brainstorming on how we might be able to leverage, or create programs around the funding. Eagan hasn't had a problem with sites this year necessarily. I think the intent of the, the funding was to expand the number of sites, and speaking with them, no one gets turned away unless they wear out their welcome. So, if a site is not open, accommodations are made to get people who have shown up to that site to an open site, and sometimes, if, if people aren't suitable for behavioral issues at one site, they will move them to another site that has staff more able to take care of those issues. So, they really feel like, while an extra site would help relieve some of the, the burden, they've been doing a good job and haven't had to turn anyone away due to a lack of capacity this season. With that, they've been, they've opened 13 nights, which has accounted for 2,500 bed nights for 690 unduplicated people this season, and they've also managed to double their volunteer base from around 200 to 400 volunteers this year. So, they've had an active year, but, and haven't had to use our funding yet. We have talked about the possibility for programs going forward that would use the funding, not necessarily related to site expansion, but to just further assist their efforts, maybe teaming with Occupy Medical Band to get them out to sites on nights of activation, and it's just a few ideas out there, and that we have to work through some of the details that would link other agencies to the Eagan Warming Centers. Further, for the Opportunity Village at Garfield, staff has convened two groups, really. We have an all-staff group that includes members from Public Works, Planning, Police, the city's Attorney's Office, and Fire Department, to help us sort through some of the issues related to just prepping the site and, and the management of the site. We also performed a request for proposals process, and have awarded the site to Opportunity Village Eugene, and we've had meetings with them, their committee, their development committee, to prep the site. We've carved out an acre of the three-acre site, which will suit their purposes, and they're happy about that. We've assigned a land use planner to the project to assist them, and they're underway with a conditional use permitting process, and we're also working with a, a user agreement on the side, because it is a temporary use, that'll allow us to take some of the issues that could get caught up in the conditional use permitting process, and keep it out to help speed up that process also. So, we feel like there's been good movement on that. The all-staff meeting we have, will be this Friday for our next meeting, and I don't know when we're scheduled to meet again with the, their operating committee, Opportunity Villages Committee, but that'll be coming up again soon, just to, I think most of the work that'll be coming through there will be going through the land use planner, just to assist with the conditional use permit, while we work on the operating agreement. I did mention Conestoga Huts and microhousing as, as a complement to the car camping program. There are two sites that serve six, six different units that are hosting six, or five units, I'm sorry, that are hosting six people. And also included in the report was a update on restrooms. Community Development has, has started a mapping project for downtown. We have about 12 maps posted throughout downtown to help people find the public restrooms in the, in the parking projects. We've also, working with Occupy Medical to have portable ADA-accessible restrooms on the park blocks for their Sunday services, and they've been very grateful for that. It's been a great, just dialogue working with them for that project. Supplying restrooms in the Whittaker with the closing, closing of Monroe Street Station continues to be difficult. Finding a private host is our aim, so it relieves the burden of, of staff having to check in on the restrooms. Anecdotally, we had an issue where the restroom was left on the park blocks, it's supposed to be picked up the day after use. It didn't get picked up, and was there unattended for four days, and neighbors started to complain of activities that were happening in unlocked bathroom, unmonitored bathroom, so that's made us cautious about having an unmonitored restroom in the Whittaker for the same reasons. So, I have been working with the Whittaker Community Council and a few other members, like Jim Evangelista from Reality Kitchen, to help find a site, but it's been proving difficult to find a host willing to take on some of the responsibilities for monitoring that. And as I did mention, we should have another update that will include some of the information I just gave to you, I would guess in the next two weeks, but if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to, to them.
The question I have is, I had talked to Pearl about when we get the, the count, and she said sometime in, in March, she thought we'd be getting it, I think, I'm anxious to, to see that report when it comes through.
As am I.
And the other thing, what, what restrooms are open at night downtown?
In our three parking structures, they have 24-hour restrooms.
Okay, and that's two sites?
It's three. We have Parkade, Broadway South, and-
Over Park?
Over Park, yes.
And then the other question I had is, so, with the car camping program, if we were really able to sort of up our, inviting people to be hosts for more car camping, do, do they have the capacity to oversee more? I mean, is that-
Yes, and that was part of the, the funding, was to, to increase their capacity to help that. I don't think that has been the issue so much as just finding sites. Their car camping coordinator has been, sites are coming online and offline all the time, so that's why the numbers seem to kind of hover around this number. We're losing some, just because a site will become developed, or a private property owner will no longer need the person. So, Keith has not had a problem, the car camping coordinator has not had a problem managing that, and then adding new sites, as well as looking over some of the Conestoga sites. And I feel as though St. Vincent has the capacity, staff-wise, to continue to increase that. If, if it were to double or something like that, that might be an issue, but for all purposes, I think we're okay in that realm.
And I would just like to, on our behalf, to the extent that we can, to encourage St. Vincent to move along with these storage units. I, I hear a lot about what's holding, holding that up, people are, are waiting, and so, I just, I, I read that it's in progress, but I'd just like to encourage them to move a little faster if they can. Claire?
Yeah, thank you, Michael. This is great. You've been doing great work, I really appreciate it, and the rest of the folks you're working with. And I also, one thing I particularly appreciate on the Opportunity Village is strategies to help move that permitting process forward, and thinking creatively about how you can do that, that's fantastic. I don't know how, when, I can't recall when we allocated these funds, how restrictive we were, but in terms of the Eagan Warming Center funding, I just want to say, you know, I support you in, again, being flexible in how we use that funding, if it's not needed for that particular aspect that we thought it was needed for, and it could be more useful by helping Occupy Medical provide services at the Eagan Warming Centers, or however that works, I think that's great, to be doing that. And then I just had a question about the funding that Shelter Care was able to get with the Emergency Housing Matching Grant. I don't know if you can answer this, but do you know how long, for what timeframe, that funding will provide emergency, those two additional housing units for emergency family housing?
That'd be through the year.
Through the calendar year?
January 1 through the end of the year.
Okay, and then it'll go away? Those two would go away unless they were able to secure more funding?
As I understand it, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I did want to say that it wouldn't, I wouldn't mind if they found that they didn't need the money that we had allocated this year, if we rolled it over to next year. I'd be happy to do that, so, help us pay for the next, the next year. Okay, thank you very much with that. I don't think there's any more questions right now. Appreciate it very much, and with that, we're done with the business of today, I think.
Just a reminder, we are having an IGR meeting-